All right, it's nine o'clock. I want to welcome everyone to the January 18th meeting of the Celine County Commission. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
And Commissioner White.
Here. We would all stand now for a flag salute in a moment of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, if Lauren with IT will instruct our virtual participants on how to speak during the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the bottom of the screen, you'll see a raise hand function. What you want to do is go ahead and select that. We'll notice it and call on you. Once we call on you, go ahead and unmute your microphone, make your comments, and then once you're done, please mute again.
Thank you, Lauren. We now move into our citizen input, where citizens may speak, usually limited up to three minutes on business pertaining to Celine County. Please state your name and address.
Lord of Manos, Slanta, Kansas. This issue is being raised all over the country. We're having water issues. What are we doing to reduce our demand on our water? We're running out of water. They're restricting water flow usages in many states. We're going to start restricting our water usage here in the state of Kansas. The next thing I would ask you gentlemen to do was, when's the last time any of you read the Kansas Association, your code of conduct? Also, Robert's Rules. That was brought up to us one time. And as our population increases, so do our problems increase. We're putting a demand on the resources. That goes back to this water. You need to Google the Colorado River and see how low that river is. Them lakes out there, they're 150 feet low. We've got a drought. And what are we doing to address this issue? When some of you gentlemen go to the city county board meeting, let's redo our lawn and stuff out here. We can put rocks out there. We can plant rocks. That's what they're doing in other states. This water's been a passion of mine since 1951, but we've got to do something.
Thank you, Norman. Anyone else who would like to address the commission? Seeing no one, we'll go on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda has the approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of City of Wichita memorandum of understanding and talk group authorization, approval of payroll, approval of accounts payable, approval of the public forum agenda as presented. Any items that any commissioner would like to address, amend?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. We now go into our action items. Item number one.
Commission board assignments.
As usual, when there's a changing of the officers of the commission, committee assignments are adjusted at that time. I've visited with a couple of the commissioners about possible committee assignments, and I have a recommendation here. I'll give the recommendation if we can discuss it, if you want, and make any changes that we feel need to happen. Slanta Airport Authority, I have Commissioner Vidrickson. Slanta Area Chamber of Commerce, I have Commissioner Wees. Central Kansas Mental Health, I have Commissioner White. Celine County City Building Authority, I have Commissioner Shadwick, Commissioners White, and Commissioner Spark. Senior Service Committee, I have Commissioner Wees. Tribe Rivers Fair Board, I have Commissioners Vidrickson. Committee for Reducing Criminal Behavior, I have Commissioner Shadwick. Health Department Advisory Council, I have Commissioner Sparks. And I've added Skeeto to the list, and as chairman, I will assign myself to that. Any discussion on these?
Looks good. Take your spot on.
And, well, do you want me to stay on the acting just at the board or the committee at the community corrections? And it's not listed here, but I just...
Yeah.
I can still be on that if you would like.
You've been on it this past year?
I've been on it for five years.
Does it have merit? I mean, are we well-served there with you attending that?
Yeah, I mean, as well as, and usually somebody else from here also attends once in a while.
Are you a voting member on that?
No.
I'm sorry.
No.
My ignorance here, but...
No, I am not.
Okay, just advisories?
Yes.
Well, I'm fine with that. We'll add that to the list if everyone's okay with that. In that committee, one more time?
Community corrections.
I'm sorry, that wasn't on our list. Okay, does this need action, then?
I think so. Mr. Chairman, I move we appoint the board members. Board assignments as discussed.
Second to motion.
We have a motion and a second to set the board assignments. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Informational items, item number one.
Pretrial status update with Andrew Pellant, pretrial program coordinator of community corrections.
Good morning, Andrew.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm giving the pretrial program update for the months of October 2021 through December 2021. There were 55 placements on pretrial services in the month of October through December. As of December 31st, 132 clients are actively being supervised, 11 are in custody, 479 have had their charges dismissed or have been sentenced, and 234 have had their pretrial bond revoked. There have been 856 placements on pretrial supervision through September 30th. Oh, that should say December 30th. That was a typo on my end. Impacting the Celine County jail space, public safety, and the community at large. Our pretrial program continues to respond to the changes affected by the COVID-19 pandemic and how it affects our clients. Pretrial ISOs follow up with clients on court dates and times, and if their appearance is in person or by video. If by Blue Jeans Video, we make sure clients have had the, or they have the information they need to appear. We still allow clients who need to, to come into the office. If they don't have internet connection, or they can't show up in person, we let them use our community corrections laptops, and they can appear in court. Of course, the main thing is that they are in a position to appear so they can avoid potential fail-to-appear warrants and things of that nature. The communication part of this, I'll just emphasize a little bit more, has been really key, especially with some of these variances that have come up, because now not only are we moving, you know, back and forth from courts being in person, some hearings being in person, some hearings being by video. So, the communication part of this is paramount with our ability to communicate with clients and help them navigate and understand which ones are in person, which ones are, can be by video, and then how they can connect and then use our resources with that. The UpTrust platform, item number five, pretrial along with drug court and juvenile services are a part of a program with UpTrust. It's a platform to communicate with our clients by text, email messages, and send out automated reminders related to court dates and times, office appointments, and other pertinent information needed for effective supervision. The public defender's office and court services continue to participate using the UpTrust platform. With UpTrust, we continue to work with them to tailor the platform to the needs of our agency. We've added several things to help continue to evolve it with it, not only just communicating court dates and times, but also communicating office appointments, their ability to communicate with the two-way communication with us, respond. We can have our programs provider who offers the programs at community corrections be able to, to send out messages to the people that attend to her groups. So, we're continuing to work with UpTrust on their changes to help our agency. A new feature that we've just started within the last few weeks that UpTrust has enacted is the ability to send out group messages to our clients, and that's of particular importance to some of our specialty programs like drug court and then our programs. So, whenever you have really one message that needs to go out to several people, instead of having to go into each individual person on the platform and send the message, for instance, they can say, "Drug Court, Brian will need to send out messages that say, just as a reminder, you have drug court this morning at so-and-so time. Please be at the office before 11:00 to provide a UA." Instead of Brian having to go in there and have just several messages sent out, he can do one message, and then he can hand-click who those messages go out to. So, it just sends out a one big group text message. In the future, I know that we're trying to shift that to group messaging. So, instead of Brian having to initiate the one message, we would have a calendar feature. We set a calendar date and time, and then that would initiate the message going out to whoever's showing up or whoever's on the schedule for that day. We are in the process of working with Central Kansas Foundation to begin implementing the UpTrust system with their treatment clients. I had a meeting set up with CKF today. We're moving along with that. There's still some HIPAA compliance. It is approved, but there's some paperwork they need to get done before they can sign the final paperwork with CKF and UpTrust, being able to make sure that, again, they're HIPAA compliant with their communications with clients and then with us about, you know, information regarding the treatment. I do have an appointment reset it was today. Kim Spencer at CKF wasn't feeling well, so we had that reset. But I'm going to go over there and, and show them the platform so they get a visual. So, when we're talking about, you know, they'll have the same ability like we do with UpTrust, communicate with their clients who are in treatment, making sure they know treatment dates and times. Many information their counselors may want to provide, and then they'll allow their counselors to communicate with community corrections officers. Again, if there's any issues or concerns, it's always easier and more effective to deal with it as soon as possible, instead of letting maybe the situation kind of, you know, the tension rise up here, and then we're having to potentially deal with discharges from treatment, because our goal, especially if it's recommended, to have somebody in treatment utilizing resources. So, if we can work with CKF on that communication, use an UpTrust, and then respond to things in a quicker fashion, then we can hopefully come up, come out with better outcomes. Our office is currently working with UpTrust to beta-test new features to ensure proper working before rolling the feature out to other users. This will increase efficiency using the platform, not just for our agencies, but any other agencies across the U.S. that UpTrust may roll this out to. So, when I say word "beta tester," so whenever there's a new feature like the group messaging, instead of them testing it internally, or maybe just rolling it out with maybe seeing if there's any, any kinks on the process, we have what we use as beta tester. So, they send it out to us first. There are several officers at our agency that test it, make sure that it's working, and then we respond back to UpTrust and say, "Yeah, this is working," or "This is not working," before they roll it out. So, this will allow them not to only be more efficient when working with our agency and our clients, but again, if they were to, to use their platform with other agencies across the United States, trying to kind of do similar things that we're doing. Pretrial expansion, we just expanded the pretrial by another officer, ISO Dave Irving. He started with pretrial as a January 1st. He's coming from the adult supervision side. He's kind of, he's going to kind of be a dual supervision officer. He's going to be a two-thirds pretrial officer, and he's also going to cover drug court. Drug court is expanding, hopefully within the next month or two. They are doing and moving along with the deferred sentencing for their clients. So, it's similar services and similar program, resources that they provide, except now what the, the point of the deferred sentencing is, is that the offenders have a conviction, and they set sentencing out. Because what we're trying to do, especially if somebody's taking advantage of the program and they're, they're making positive changes in their life, we try to remove the barriers that don't need to be there. And sometimes that barrier could be a recent felony conviction. And so, what the deferred sentencing with the drug court program is going to do is, for those who obviously are eligible with certain criteria, and they complete the program, the idea is that then the, the state would then dismiss the case. So, there's not that, they still have the conviction, and it's kind of, for lack of a better term, hung over their head in case they don't complete the program the way they're supposed to, to where they can be sentenced. But the whole point of somebody takes the, the program seriously, and they make changes, that the recent, you know, conviction with the sentencing is not going to affect other opportunities. Dave will cover about one-third of that caseload, and he's also going to cover any Ottawa County cases that are eligible for either pretrial or drug court. So, we're expanding the programs into Ottawa County in order to kind of accommodate the expansion in our office with space. We have started the construction project in the back of our office, where they're just, they're using what's already available office space, and then they're, we're going to move the pretrial program back there. That's going to allow for three of us to be back there. And then, when the drug court continues to expand, we're going to have open office spaces in the, in the main part of the office. And so, that should be about, from what Hutton said, maybe three weeks. It's not going to be very long. They're not adding on a structure. They're just adding to an existing structure. Just, they said it'd be about 30 days before they're completing. We can move back there. Again, last action item is, pretrial continues to help clients address any underlying issues or concerns by making appropriate community referrals for resources, and also helping cover some costs so they can receive the support they need. We have made several referrals. I actually had a list I meant to put with, I'll go ahead and include it on my next one here in three months, with regards to the amount of community referrals that just the pretrial program made. And I could tell, it was in the 50s or 60s. But again, I had that ready, and then, my apologies, I didn't get it with this agenda, but I will put it in, just to give you an idea of just the pretrial program, all the different resources that we refer out to, that we help cover costs, and things of that nature. And that being said, is there any questions for me today?
Well, Andrew, on, your report is for October, November, December, but on discussion of issue number three, it says that these numbers are through September the 30th. Is that a typo?
That's a typo on my end.
Okay, it should have been...
Yes, I, I went off the, all the agenda items that I did for September, and I just forgot to change September to December. The, the numbers are good, it's just I forgot to change September.
Very good. Also, this probably isn't a question for you, but for my fellow commissioners, when we started the, and okay, the pretrial services department or whatever, we talked about this being a semi-annual report, and, and right off the bat, we said, "No, let's make this a quarterly report so we can keep up with it and so forth." And I think, what are we, two years now into it, three years?
We're three years, almost three years in March.
I'm just curious if we need to continue a quarterly reporter, if we can go to a semi-annual, or do we even want to make it just part of the community corrections update and report of the entire organization? I'm just food for thought.
How often do we get a community corrections?
Semi-annual right now.
When Annie comes in?
Right.
Okay. I'm okay with that unless there's something breaking, that, you know, he can always bring that information to us by email or another way. I like hearing the reports, but...
I, I do too, but, but my point is, it seems a little bit repetitive, and, and we're bringing Andrew in here for, and then, obviously, it takes him a while to put together this report. I'm just wondering if we really need it quarterly.
Okay.
We have a study session yet today that we address our, well, I guess it's an, it's an informational item number three, where we, we talk about our department public forum updates. So...
Okay.
Why don't we bring that in at that time, and, and we can discuss it then?
Cart before the horse.
Thank you.
I had it questioned on my, go ahead. No, I do too. Yeah, just a quick one, and I should know this, but like on item number one, where there were 55 placements on pretrial services, on on three, there's have been 856 placements on pretrial supervision. What's the difference between the services and the supervision?
It's, it's the same. It's, sometimes I'll use pretrial services or pretrial supervision. They're, they're really interchangeable.
Okay.
In regards to how I refer to the program.
I mean, why, why is it that there's 55 placements, and then there's 856 placements?
That's through the entirety of the program on the 856, and then the 55 placements were just for the months of October through December of this year. And so, one gives the overall kind of complete. This is how many people's come since the inception of the program.
Oh.
And then the 55 is just the, the last three months.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Andrew, one question I had. You mentioned that if people are successful in their drug court, that felony charges can be dropped. Are those, any felony charges are nonviolent?
No. Nonviolent, yeah. It's just, just like with the, the drug program kind of parameters now, there's only certain cases that could go into drug court. We're, we're talking about level five possession. No, no sales, no distribution, no violence. Kind of already what's the parameters of drug court that allows them into the current program is going to be used as the same for the deferred sentencing. And so, they're going to, they, they screen them like they would a normal drug court client, and then if they have any of those factors, they're automatically excluded from that program.
Well, thank you. Any other questions for Andrew? I appreciate the report.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, have a good day.
I guess we're to item number two.
County Engineers update with Justin Mater, county engineer.
Morning, Justin.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning. So, this update is since October of last year. So, so I'm going to start off by kind of giving a brief summary of what we completed on last year's road and bridge program, just a very quick summary on that. The first one would be our hot mix overlay projects, and so, we completed projects on North Old Highway 81, Old Highway 40, State Street, and North Street for about $1.3 million. We completed bi-tumulus chip seal on 45 miles of road for $966,000. We put down 48,000 pounds of crack seal material for about $59,000. We completed aggregate shouldering on 19 and a half miles of road, and that's just where we just did shouldering. It wasn't part of an overlay. It was just a shouldering on a, an existing road. We replaced tin pipes around the county on asphalt surface roads, and those are the projects where we cut the asphalt, replace the pipe, and then patch the asphalt back. So, those 10 projects cost about $257,000. And then, we completed 11 pipes where we lined those pipes on Brookville Road for $277,000. And then finally, we constructed seven reinforced concrete box projects around the county for about $610,000. So, now I'll move forward into what we plan on doing this year. First of all, is there any questions on what we did last year?
I have a question. Our crack seal bids that came in last year that we approved, we, we were a little hesitant because the bids were quite drastically different.
Yes.
Can you give us an update of, of quality and, and whether, as an engineer, you were pleased with the, or not pleased with the...
So, there was definitely a learning curve with the contractor on, on getting a product that, that we expected, and we kind of demanded from the contract that we put out in our bids. You know, so there, there was some work with them, you know, trying to get down. Number one, you have traffic control, and traffic control was kind of an issue through this whole thing. That was my biggest issue with this contractor, is just running the, the pilot car through there and getting their signs set up appropriately, you know, to make sure we, we can get people through the, the project site. You know, and then we had, you know, issues with the routing. You know, they, this company doesn't do a lot of routing, and then getting the crack, cracks filled appropriately. And so, those were all, I mean, it, it took some time to, to get them where we wanted to be. They did put effort, and, and they really wanted to give us what we wanted. And so, that, that made a, a big difference. As far as a grade, if you would go out and, you know, and look at the, the work that they did, I'd probably give them a C to C minus on the work that they completed. The cracks got sealed, because that's ultimately what we're after, is we want to get the cracks sealed up, and, and we accomplished that. sealed up and, and we accomplished that. You know, it wasn't the prettiest work in the world. So that's kind of where I'm giving them that C, C grade, but their, their traffic control and the work that we had to do with them on getting their traffic controls was really disappointing. It's probably something that I wouldn't recommend having them back just because of that traffic control is such an important thing to every project that we do to make sure people can get safely through the project. And it was, we had to be right there on top of them and had issues with that. So I probably wouldn't recommend having them back.
Thank you.
Okay.
Justin, on your, your shouldering, 19 and a half miles, where does Brookville Road fit into that equation?
So for, you mean for last year's?
Correct.
Last year's projects, that was, I'm trying to remember, I think that our maintenance division did some shouldering out on there and so my, what I'm going to be talking about only has to deal with projects where we hired a contractor.
I see.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with the maintenance, maintenance side of that. So, but yeah, they, they did complete some, some.
Earth shouldering.
Correct, right, yeah.
I was curious. And in regards to your line pipes on Brookville Road, I got to watch that in, in action and in the process and it was, it was awesome, it really was. And I was just curious, and maybe I have those figures and maybe you could supply them in the future, one of your updates would be appreciated. And that is regards to the actual cost to replace the whole thing, the old way versus the line or the cost difference.
Mm-hmm.
Because I'm looking at the, let alone asphalt being destroyed and.
Right.
A new tube put in, six foot deep at least. It's got to be equals numbers. I'm curious.
So yeah, we've, we have, I have put together a spreadsheet, because that's something that, you know, I mean, was super interested in. And it's, we kind of have to kind of look at it with a grain of salt in that a contractor has, has not worked in this area for Sling County. So the first time, they're always going to be a little bit higher than what they, they normally would moving forward. Some, some sites were a little more expensive than cutting the, the pipes out and replacing them. But you also have to look at the size of the pipe makes a big difference and some of the pipes that we replaced, we, we, we cut the road and took out and some of the, the pipes that we lined, you're not the same size. And so you kind of have to look at that and kind of do a little bit of comparison, subjective comparison that way. But there was also several sites where it was quite a bit cheaper than, than cutting a road. The part that's really hard to put a dollar value on is just the, the cost to the public, the inconvenience to the public when you've got that road, you know, a very important road, you know, shut down for two weeks. You know, that's a cost that, you know, I don't really show anywhere because you can't really put that, put that on there. So as I'm going to talk about here, I've got another project where I'd like to do several sites with the lining. I think it is, it is well worth continuing, moving forward with that lining because of, if you just even look at the cost, it's how it shows right now, it's very comparable. It's very comparable to cutting, cutting the asphalt out, but you don't have that inconvenience of shutting a road down. So, but I do have some numbers and I can absolutely show you with what we have, what we've completed in the past, absolutely.
Good, I appreciate it.
Now I'll move on to this year's program. You should have a map in your packet as well as up here on the screen, there is a, I've got our 2022 proposed road and bridge program. It should be, it's very similar to what we've done in the past and I try to keep the same colors every year with the lines and denoting what the different projects are. So I'll start off with our span bridge projects and those are the orange or brown rectangles that you have see on the map. The first one is 160-foot reinforced concrete haunt slab project and that's located on Minter Road just east, east of Gipson Valley Road and it's currently under construction now. L and M Contractors is the contractors out there building it. Everything's going pretty smooth, you know, but those, these types of projects are, they're a six-month project, so it, it does take a little bit. The next one is a 180-foot reinforced concrete haunt slab on Waterwell Road just east of Gipson Valley Road. We're currently working on this project on the design. The design's pretty well, I should say it's probably 85% complete. We're also, you approved for me to buy right away on this project and so we're kind of going through that process. And here very shortly, I'm going to have some geotechnical investigation proposals due in my office and so I'll be coming to you in the next couple of weeks to, to get, to get that work approved. And we're looking at probably a late next winter for construction on that project is probably what we're looking at. The next is I'll move to our reinforced concrete box projects and those are the light blue circles on the map. So we still have a project under contract with Reese Construction and this was actually a 2020 contract and this is that project on Niles Road just south of the county line. And this project was, was delayed because of a water line issue. The water line needed to be relocated and by the time we got that done, the project, I didn't allow the project to start because this project has asphalt on it and so when the box is ready for asphalt work, we need to have an asphalt plant that's running. And so that's why we kicked it off until here this late winter, early next spring project. So we're looking at a February, March timeframe for the construction to begin. The next is a, it's going to be a standalone project. It's the intersection, at the intersection of Waterwell Road and Don Meyer intersection and this project extends about a half mile north and a half mile east and it includes, and then as well as south a little ways. It includes four reinforced concrete boxes on that project and there's some significant grading, there's some flooding issues, some roadway overtopping issues that we're, we're trying to fix with this. So there's going to be significantly more grading on this project than our other just conventional box projects and so that's why we kind of pulled this one out to bid, to bid separately. The next box project is, it's on Fallen Road just west of Burma. I have this in my summary, kind of pulled out by itself because it's a FEMA Section 428 reimbursement project. And so this is the, the Section 428 is the reimbursement from the 2019 flooding that we had. So this has been around for a while, trying to get these projects approved. This might be a standalone project, but we could include it in this package of seven other RCB project sites that we have. Those are the remaining blue circles on the map. So we're currently working on the, the design on those projects and when we have that ready to go, I'll be coming to you again to ask permission to, approval to purchase right away on those projects. Next is the pipelining projects and those are the green circles with the stars in the center, kind of over in, in this area. And so we're looking at 11, 15 sites, sorry, excuse me, on Brookville Road as well as State Street. So we got several other sites on Brookville Road that we didn't complete last year because they weren't in, we, we did the kind of the worst first last year, but we also wanted to minimize how many sites we did not going through this lining experience before. You know, as we mentioned earlier, it was a, you know, it was a smashing success, I thought. And so I want to go ahead and knock out the, the remaining pipes along Brookville Road and then add State Street over to Headville Road. We've got several pipes in through there that's in desperate need of work, that they're, they're pretty rusted out and, and, and something needs to be done on those right away. So, so we have 15 sites there. Now I'll move into our asphalt maintenance program, starting off with our hot mix overlay and those are the black lines on the map. The first one is Ohio Street going north of I-70 to where the, the pavement ends. This project also will include, it's not just an overlay, but it's going to include significant crack repairs. So along that road, I mean, there's inch and a half to two-inch wide cracks through there. So we did fill those with crack filler last year just to make sure we minimize the amount of moisture that got down into the base. But if we don't do a, a, a crack repair on, on the worst ones, I think we'll have some issues with the overlay that we put on top of it. And, and what the crack repair is going to cause though, is, is going to cause the Ohio Street to be closed. And we're going to try to do, we haven't exactly figured out the sequencing because we got to make sure everybody can get in and out. But we're going to have to close, close the road in order to get those, those cracks repaired. Because what we're going to have to do is, we're going to have to cut out about a, a two-foot wide path of asphalt where that crack's at, all the way down to the base. So you're looking about 18 inch, or eight inches deep and then put asphalt back that whole, that whole section. And so we can't, you can't run pilot car because then you still have this trough at night that you still have to deal with. And so we still, again, we still haven't worked out those details, but we'll be, we'll sure, I'll keep you involved in, in how we plan on doing that. The next overlay is on Waterwell Road from the Smoky Hill River Bridge east to Simpson. So this, there's two sections along that road where we paved back in 2019, I believe it was. You know, so we were a little concerned about the roadway, the existing roadway surface and the base that we were putting that asphalt on. And so I didn't want to, I kind of tried to balance, you know, putting enough asphalt structure there to carry the traffic, but not so much that if we did have some issues with the base where the pavement was starting to fail, you know, we'd have to go in there and tear that out and redo that. Luckily, we haven't had really any issues. The road's in still pretty good shape and so, but I'd like to get a little more structure on those roads before we do, do have some issues. Next is Waterwell Road from Lightville to Burma Road. That's another section of road where we, we paved a couple of years ago. This is also the section of road where we've got some subgrade issues on that. And we've had some testing done on it. We had a company called Uratec come and, and do some, some subgrade testing and really the testing was kind of all over the board. You know, we had places where the subgrade was really soft and we were having lots of cracks in the road and we had places where the subgrade was really hard and we had cracks in the road. And so they're not completely sure that, you know, they're not the company. So Uratec also performs the expandable foam injection that I've talked with you about before. They're not, they're not real confident that their product's going to solve our issues just because of the, the variability and the, the testing that they did. You know, so I've, I've talked, my staff and I, we've talked quite a bit about what we want to do on that and I've talked with Darren Fishel, the Road and Bridge Administrator, to kind of get his opinion on and, and where we're at right now is, what we're thinking of doing is, so from Crest Lane up to Knoll Lane, which is really the, the east side of the big hill through there, I'm just doing an overlay on that and then backing up and doing an overlay in that entire mile. And that just gives a little extra structure there. And we're hoping that's, that'll, that'll help with that issue. I think we're always going to have issues there, but we're hoping that'll kind of minimize it. But that's kind of where we're at right now. Again, we're always trying to keep our, our brains grinding on, on finding a better solution on that, but that's kind of where we're at right now. And then we've got a small project where the maintenance division has asked us to put an approach on Stimmer Road going on to Simpson Road. And so there's, if you look on your map, there's just a little tiny black dot right there and that's where that approach is, right there. And then finally, we've got about five to seven small areas where we're going to do real short sections of overlay and that's just to fix some, some pavement irregularities that we have around the county. Next, I've got programmed about 39 miles of chip seal around the county. That's the, the blue lines on the map. And this also includes a fog seal on State Street from Heads, from Halsted to K-40, K-140, sorry, and then on Halsted from State Street north to I-70. And so we did two one-mile sections, test sections last year with the fog seal and so that's, you know, after we did the chip seal, the contractor came back and sprayed the black, and it's a specialized oil, it's not the same oil, but it's a sprayed oil on top of the aggregate. The two benefits are, number one is you've got better chip retainage, you know, so you've got the, the chip seal oil on the bottom, you know, that your aggregate's sitting into and then you spray oil on top of it and so it kind of encapsulates your, your rock for your chip seal. And then another benefit is just the color, you know, being black. And so I've talked with Darren about how those two sections were when they were doing snow removal and he said it made a, it was a big difference. So when they're doing those, snow removals on those two roads, which is Magnolia and Crawford, those sections that had the fog seal, the ice broke up and this, you know, the snow and the ice, you know, broke up and melted so much quicker than the other sections of road. However, if you go look at it right now, the one thing that snow removal does do, not just to the fog seal, but really to the chip seal, you know, is when you've got high points in the road, so if you look at the cross-section of your road where your wheels are driving, those are usually, the, the surface of your wheel pass are lower than in between your wheel paths, at the edge of the road and at center line. And so when, so we use motor graders to do a lot of snow removal, well, it's clipping the rock on the high spots on the road. And so you'll look, it's where we've got white, you know, or tan streaks on, on those roads where the motor grader just kind of clipped off the tops of those rocks. So it does show that, but we feel that just the benefit of the rest of the road still being very black and, and still pretty happy with, with the performance of those chip seals, we would like to, to do those on a few more miles. Next is, we got about 30,000 pounds program for our crack seal and those are the red lines on the map. For aggregate shouldering, those will be the green lines, however, if you look on the map there, there are no green lines shown. We don't get real excited about defining, you know, what roads we're going to do, just the aggregate shouldering on. Usually those roads will present itself after the spring where you get a lot more erosion on, on the shoulders and so we'll, we'll kind of wait till that, after spring to define what roads we need to do that on. For our road improvement projects, those are the, it's the orange line, orange or brown line, however you want to define it, on the map, starting off with Simpson Road from Magnolia to Crawford. And this is the project where we're receiving federal funds to add the, the shouldering and regrading the ditches on that. This project was, is going to be let through KDOT on March 16th, so it will be built this year. I'm very, very excited about getting that project completed. Kirk and Michael has been hired to perform the construction engineering on that and, you know, so they'll be, they'll be there doing the, the day-to-day construction inspection and engineering on that, that project. The other project that we have is for road improvements is South Old Highway 81 from I-135 to Assyria Road. So that's down, down in this section right here. This project here, the Sling County was awarded $846,000 through KDOT's cost share program. And so this project's going to be very similar to what we did last year on the North Old 81, where we're going to add the three-foot shoulders, we're going to widen it out three foot on each side with the pavement and then do an overlay on, on top of that. And so we'll still have your white lane lines, will still be about in the same location where they're at now, but then you'll have that asphalt on the outside of that and that gives you that little extra forgiveness, if you want to call it that, you know, outside of that lane line where you still have asphalt out there. Next is the, the FEMA Section 428 projects, so those are also the orange lines on the map. So I did talk about that one reinforced concrete box project on Fallen Road, but the others are the, the three. the others are the three, three roads where we're going to reroute the gravel roads around the channel, channel erosion. So we'd like to get that done this year. Again, granted, if we get the FEMA approval for that. So like I said, that thing's been hanging around for 2019, and it's just, it's been a slow, slow process trying to get this approved through FEMA. And then the other, the two projects besides the Fallen Road box project is the improvements to Gypsum Valley Road north of K-40, and then Kingman Road east of the city of Gypsum or west of the Gibb Creek Bridge. And those two projects, we would like to add asphalt surfacing. It gets overtopped, those sections of road get overtopped quite a bit, and so we're hoping that in the asphalt surfacing. And some treatments to the downstream four slope of the road, you know, will, will help hold those roads where we're at instead of washing out. And then I just threw a couple miscellaneous projects here on the end. Our 2022 paint and pipe bids are currently being advertised, and we're going to open those bids on February 8th, so about middle of February. I'll come back to you asking to award those, those projects. We've got the bridge on Shipton Road, right there at K-143. And so this is actually a KDOT project, but after the project going to be built, or after the project is built, it'll be a Sling County bridge. And I don't, I don't have a letting date on that project right now. I should have looked that up, and I don't have that with me right now. We will have, or hopefully we will be having coordination with KDOT on the K-4 design, the project. You know, so K-4s is currently under design from the Smoky Hill River Bridge on K-4 all the way to, I believe it's Niles Road. And so you've got a lot of county intersections with that project, and so we should be coordinating with KDOT and on what's going to happen on those, those there. And then finally, we're going to be, this year, want to finalize the updating our design standards and then utility entrance permits, and get that, get that going. So we'll have a study session with this board here next month, where I'd like to talk about some of that stuff, so we can get it finalized, as well as just updating our road improvement program. So we've, we can make changes, we can kind of look at what we, we had currently, and to see how we want to, how we want to be changing that. So as far as the, the budget update, so for our asphalt contractual projects, and so that's our hot mix overlay, chip seal, crack seal, and shouldering, I've got a budget about $2.9 million. And really, where that comes from is for our, I've got about 2.5, I've got $2.5 million for our contractual asphalt budget line item. And then, if you would allow me to use our federal fund exchange money, that's about $244,000. So when we get that, we'll put that in our 127 special construction account, as well as about $200,000 from the Kansas Local Bridge Improvement Program. I would like to use those funds to go towards our contractual asphalt projects. So this year, right now, it's, I've got an estimated program of about $2.5 million there. For our bridge and pipe replacement projects, for, we use our 125 special bridge construction account, and has a current unencumbered balance of about 1.7 million. And then for our special road improvements, we use the 124 account, and has an unencumbered balance of about 1.1 million. Questions?
Good report.
Do you see any funding coming from the federal government with the infrastructure bill that was passed? Does that impact the county at all?
Yes, maybe. Does that help? So the issue, it all sounds good that this new federal program's going to have all this money that can go directly to counties, okay? So it, politically, it sounds wonderful. However, the issue that you have with that is, you still have all of the strings of the documents and the strings of just being, using federal funds. So right now, when counties use federal funds, they're administered through KDOT. So KDOT does all of the, I'm going to call it "stuff," because nobody really knows what this "stuff" is, you know, all the paperwork and what you have to do to use federal funds. KDOT takes care of that for counties and cities that are using federal funds. Okay, so now with this program, they says, okay, well, here's all these funds available directly to counties and cities, you know, the local public authority. But that means that that local public authority now has to do what KDOT does for you. And so we've, we've talked about this quite a bit at the, I'm on the LTAP Advisory Board, I'm also on the KCHA Liaison Committee, where we meet with KDOT, and we're kind of talking about, okay, what kind of training that, you know, needs to be done in order for cities and counties to really legitimately go after some of this money? And so that's still being, being debated on how we go about doing that, because most counties, you know, they, they really don't have the staff and the expertise to do that. So for Sling County, we could, we would have to kind of look at what the training is and really what it's going to require, the time commitment that it's going to require to try to go after some of these funds. That's still, a lot of those details are still just have to be, to be really looked at and determined whether that's something that Sling County would like to do. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Justin. Any other questions for Justin while we're having?
No, and I just want to say, I commend you for your, and thank you for helping out our Expo Center question the other day last week. I mean, I know you're busy, but you drove right back into town and took care of some issues over there, so I wanted to thank you on that.
Oh, sure, my pleasure. Okay.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Moving on, item number three.
Department Public Forum Updates Discussion.
Okay, we all have the list in front of us that shows how, who we meet with and how often we meet with it. Commissioner Vidicson questioned the pre-trial stats that we get quarterly. Looking down this list, does anyone have any of these that they would like to discuss I have two questions, and, and if it merits the time, I'm all for it. But we meet bimonthly with our Human Resources, and we also meet bimonthly with Road and Bridge. I know it takes staff time to not only prepare a report, but then time away to give that report. Do we, as a group, feel that, that it merits a bimonthly from those two entities?
Not on Human Resources for me. I mean, most of that can just be handled by an email, but...
And I, you know, it's another one of those issues where it's like, I think if there is a situation that arises, an email is quickly, can handle a lot of things. But I think if that went to a biannual or a quarterly thing, would be fine. That's just my thought. And since, and let me ask you, though, that since the Road and Bridge is here, does it, does it matter to you, or is that benefit of coming every, let's say, two months versus a quarterly, to you? I mean...
Well, Commissioner, that's, that's Darren's report, not Justin's report.
Right, that's what I was going to say. Quarterly for the engineering is probably more than adequate, but Darren, his, what he's got going on is a lot.
Yes, I'm sorry.
He's got a lot more stuff going on.
And I know from past conversations with Darren, he does feel like he needs to be in front of you fairly often, just to keep you all updated.
Excuse me.
You know, Road and Bridge is one of the more significant budgets that you all deal with, so it's certainly up to the commission how often you want to hear from staff, but I know Darren, in the past, has expressed a desire to be here fairly often.
It's a pretty detailed report that they do give. I would, would think that we could perhaps condense that, that, you know, rather than show us the results of every single project that they've done out there, you know, condense it to some more of the, the more significant ones, something to that effect. I know it takes him a lot of time to put together that entire program and, and reports, so he might want to think about that, condense it a little bit. I do enjoy some of the slides, the before and after type thing. It really, really shows some significant impact that they have on the roads, but to show every single project is probably, you know...
I look at his presentation, and I know that there's a tremendous amount of time put into, to getting that put together. I just don't know if we move that from two months to every three months quarterly, you're only adding a month. The report might grow by a third, but he would have, he would have less time spent having to prepare those, I assume. I mean, I do, I enjoy seeing improvements that are being made around the county, and then he takes you from spot to spot. I just don't know if it warrants that every other month, whether it be every third month, but I, if it's time well spent, then, then we'll have the reports.
And also, I'd take into consideration his viewpoint of wanting to be in front of us more often.
Right.
And it is such a big budget item. Yeah, I think, you know, if we just go to what Commissioner Vidicson said and just kind of cut that down a little bit for him, I think it'd be helpful.
Yeah, the, what do I want to say? The however often that he gives the report isn't the issue, it's what's in that report.
Right.
And I do think that we need to probably keep that department in front of us pretty regularly. That's, it's our largest expense, I think, maybe jail is. But, you know, you give and take, they're both about 10 million bucks. So condense the report and keep him here.
I don't have the list, Mr. Chair, in front of me, but what do we, what, when, how often does the appraiser come?
The appraiser is biannual. So I think that coincides with things happening in his office.
Okay, I couldn't remember, so...
Such as that, and...
Thank you.
Okay, we talked, and let me touch on Human Resources, then. There, too, Maryland is bimonthly. It's usually figures of hires and retirements and this and that. Do we, do we enjoy a bimonthly report from Human Resources?
You know, I enjoy the reports. They're, they're right there in front of us. They could be handled by email. One thing about it, they're, they're pretty quick, short, detailed, to the point, so it doesn't take us a lot of time, but she still has to come and sit and wait and those types of things, so I'm okay with whatever there.
I mean, they ought to be backed off at least a quarterly, if not semiannually for me, but... I mean, I enjoyed, anytime that you mention this, it makes it sound like we don't want to see them here.
Right, right.
I also want to be respectful of their time and our time, and...
That's where I'm coming from, but I would go with the quarterly thing on that, really.
Well, any of these that we make a decision on or suggest, I think we need to include the department head at some point in time before we make a final decision. And, and see what, see what their thoughts are. Maybe there's some things that they feel that are important for them to get before us, and that we may not think is as important, but yet it is.
Right.
Well, let's touch on the pre-trial stats that Commissioner Vidicson was pointing out earlier. We have Andrew come in here every quarter to give that report.
Well, I'll pick it up again, then. I still think we could, we can back that off to perhaps even, and again, I would want to get, get the feelings from, from Andrew and Annie Grievous as to whether or not that can be included upon, in on the Community Corrections Report in general. Like I said, when we first started that, it was imperative that we get our mind into what was really going on with the pre-trial basis. And I think we now, in three years, have got a feel for that.
I too, I too think that it could be on the Community Corrections.
Yes.
Portion of it. I also can, if, if, part of my committee assignments, I get that information also. So I'd be happy to, if there's something critically for you guys to know, I can do that in just my meeting. I mean, I'm not on the pre-trial, but we go over the pre-trial stuff in the Reducing Criminal Behavior Committee that I'm on. You know, we get all those statistics, and is what I'm saying is...
And that's a good point, Monty, because, I mean, there's two or three of these that we have a commissioner on the, on these, on these boards at their. Health Department is one, the, not totally the Health Department, but Community Corrections, we certainly have someone assigned to that, and Senior Services. You know, it's, we depend on that commissioner to bring that information back to us.
Right.
That could head off some of this. And I think what we're really talking about, it's not to save us time, it's to, to save the department head the time and that they send in preparation for it, so... And again, I just want to emphasize the, the message that we want to send here is, I would like to get the, the department head's opinion of the things that we're talking about, whether they need to come as often or as detailed as they're doing.
Agreed.
Well, I guess we could pass this off to the county administrator to touch base, have a discussion with, with what our thoughts were and what their department head's thoughts are, and then report back to us.
And also, the administrator's viewpoint on, on all of the things that we're talking about here, you know, kind of be the kind of in-between guy between the us and the department heads. If that makes sense to you.
I agree with everything that's been stated. Anything we can do to expedite and make county government more efficient would be advantageous for all of us to consider. But keep in mind, commissioners, that those department heads, if they do need a voice with the board, they have that mechanism in place.
Any...
And at any time, something comes up in conjunction with the administrator, they can get that information to us, so keep that in mind.
Agreed.
Yep, concur.
Is that as clear as my county administrator?
I can certainly take it up with the department heads and report back.
Well, there's a, I mean, I don't know if you were going to go right on down the list, Jim, is that what you're...
Uh, no, that's...
Well, I'm thinking of the Health Department. I mean, particularly in times of, of what's going on right now in our, our climate in the, the health world, a biannual report probably right now isn't often enough. I mean, it can be, it doesn't have to be in person. He could, you know, send a report over or whatever, but I think that's one department that we probably need to step it up, for the time being, anyway. We can always back it off, but right now, I mean, I love what's coming out in the emails and the community matters that they send out, what, weekly or even, no, it's actually three times a week, yeah. That that comes, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, that comes out, and I read that, but that isn't always available to all of the general public. And maybe there's some things once in a while that I would like to discuss with, with Jason and/or my fellow commissioners that we could, again, I don't want to take a bunch of his time, but, you know, if we could certainly look at that a little more often than we're doing.
Well, that brings merit back to what Commissioner White was speaking about. There are times when it... are times when, when we need to step away from that, and that, that's available. And whether, whether it be the Sheriff's Office or it be the Health Department, if there's things that are happening that, that, that the public and the commissioners need to be brought up to speed on, they aren't limited to what's on this. There can be additional reports given, and, and I think those are for the asking.
Can I ask a question of the commissioners? What's the purpose in your mind of these reports?
That's a great question.
I feel like in some respects, we're doing this because we've done this in the past, and if we, if we step away from the schedule for a minute and just think about how is it that you would like to receive information from the departments, and I'm assuming receive it in a way that it is then reflected on to your constituents, right? Because part of the virtue of having people show up here is then it's not just for the five of you, it's also for 55,000 other people. So, I mean, I guess I would just challenge you all to give me some feedback on what you see as the purpose of these reports, and that might drive the schedule rather than the schedule driving the purpose.
I like how you think.
That is spot on, man. I just didn't have the courage to say that. This is the way we've always done it. I'm thinking, why are we doing all of these, these type of meetings when there's, it's regular information that's available to everyone in the county on a regular basis, and then we sit here and discuss it? It just makes sense.
What have you, what have you seen in your career and other places that you felt has worked?
So, one of the things that I have seen done is to have all the departments submit something to the county administrator on a monthly basis, and then that come to the commission in a written form, and if you have questions, then we would pull in the department head at the next meeting to further discuss that. And not every department has an update every month, but it's, you know, whoever has something to say, that's one model that I have seen. I have seen models where it's sort of similar to what is done here, oral reports on a scheduled basis throughout the year, but seen that really prioritized based on sort of the size of the department or the size of the budget, that sort of thing. You know, certainly, I think there's also, as has been mentioned here, there's a timeliness factor to some of this, right? You all, I think it was important that you all understand pre-trial services. When it was a brand-new program and you were launching it, that has sort of reseeded in importance in some way. Not that it's not still an important program, but just that the, the understanding is there versus Health Department, for many, many years, the Health Department was sort of out of sight, out of mind, and then you have a global pandemic, and you're not getting reports maybe as frequently as possible. So, so that being just sort of, I don't know, more flexible, I guess, and as opposed to establishing a schedule at the beginning of the year and saying, here's where we slot you in.
What, what if we were to pass the buck, so to speak, and I'm asking this of my fellow commissioners, and ask the administration, administrator and his assistant or deputy, if they were to come back with a recommendation on what, how we should handle this department head public forum? I really do like that information that you just discussed, that, that process. Condense this, and you make the recommendation to what you think we should be doing, based on your past experiences and so forth, and, and then we can act on it from there. I think that's better than the willy-nilly thing that I've been kind of throwing out there, you know, to cut it back a month or add a month or whatever. You have a feel for this. You've been here long enough now to see these, these reports that we get on a, on a regular basis, and which ones we really should be seeing and which ones we don't need to see as often. I'm throwing it back to you, if my fellow commissioners would so suggest.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that, and to answer your question, what do we want from this? I mean, yeah, I like the information, and I think that all the departments are very important, so I don't want to minimize, you know, I don't want them to think that we're minimizing their importance and everything. It's just there's a lot of different ways to get information anymore, and, you know, what is, what is more efficient, like Commissioner White said, of everybody's time? You know, I, you know, coming to the packet with reading it over the weekend helps me get informed and, you know, maybe doesn't take up so much time, so. The information is helpful. It's just, there's just different ways to get information today.
And so many times, I feel like so many times that when we have an RFA to do something, whether it's Road and Bridge, whether it's Sheriff's Office, or HR, or whatever, it's like, sometimes if we had some pertinent information and some pictures about what that RFA is, needs for, here's what it looks like now, here's why we're replacing it, here's what we're doing, might be able to help and, and take care of some of the, the things that goes on here.
While they're already here.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. That's a good point.
Even though some of the information that we receive at these updates are, is information that we've already been privy to through emails or Road and Bridge. We know what, what roads were closed for what reasons. We know where, where all this was happening. I don't want to lose sight that those reports for many of the public are their only, at their only glance into the county government. If they, if everything they know, they learn from the county commission meetings, I would hate to take that off of their plate, and they no longer have that information. So it might be a little redundant, some of them might be a little redundant for us. They, do they serve a purpose for the, the public in general? That's. Well, are we consensus that Commissioner Vedrickson handing this over to the administrator, and he coming back to us with possible ideas of how we do our public forum updates with the departments?
Can you handle it, Phil? And one more question forthcoming?
Yes, sir.
I concur.
I concur.
I concur. Sounds good. Even if you hand it off to Hannah, whatever.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it goes back to another thing. I mean, we're around, we're, you guys are here, you know, 40 hours plus every week. You're, you're a lot more hands-on than, than what we are at our, at our capacities, and you're the ones that really can, can give us the right information, or the suggestion, I should say. So I'm looking forward to that. And I, I mean, I just, the question you asked to begin with, Phil, is what do we really want, and this is the way we've always done it? I mean, that's perfect.
Yep, great.
All right. Item number four.
Commissioners' comments.
Quickly, I'd like to say some things were brought up at the last meeting, and I would hope that we'll be, have some more input here coming up, as far as, one of them was the realignment of districts and such. Do you have some type of timeframe of when we might be?
Well, what I heard from the commission was 30 to 45 days.
Okay.
So the, what I heard from you all last week, the clerk is out right at the moment, and so have not had a chance to touch base with her, but I.
That's fine.
I'm operating under that 30 to 45 day.
I'm just asking the question to make sure that it's still.
Yep, absolutely.
On the table and moving forward.
Yes.
All right. Any other commissioners have anything that?
Nope.
I guess we will go to item number five, then.
Announcements.
One of the things I want to bring up is, is just, I, since I am not on the, the board anymore, let's say, I, I think that there is a, and that's another one of those things where maybe if we could start putting these into these situations here, or action information, like here you have, tonight is the Tri-Vers Fair Board, so Mr. Vedrickson would be going to that tonight at 7:30, since you are on that board.
This is the first I know of any of it, so I.
Well, that's what, that's the reason why I'm bringing that up now, because I would assume that you would go to that. I mean, you are on.
Your assumption there is wrong, because I already have plans for this evening, but.
Okay, but, but that, that, they do meet tonight, and, and another one I think that meets this week, but you would know that, the Eco Development, or one of those meets this week, I think, or the Chamber, I forget, but.
I mean, SKEDO is on Thursday.
Okay.
This coming Thursday?
Yeah, okay.
Well, and there again, with, with this realignment and changes, not only do we need to know when, when our expectations of being there are, but also let the chairman of these different committees know that there's been some changes of, of assignment there, and, and so they can make any email changes and such.
Yeah, that's, thank you. That's what I just need to get to, Kevin.
I'm confident Lynda's already taken care of that, so. And, Mr. Chair, I do have an announcement. I reported about them approximately a month ago, that the executive director of Central Kansas Mental Health has turned in his resignation, having future things in her life to attend to. So since then, the board has met, and they have appointed Glinda Phillips, Glenna Phillips, I'm sorry, and as the executive director, replaced Kathy Moser, I believe, on March 14th, and so she's going to be working hand-in-hand with Kathy until that's Kathy's last day. Glenna's been employed with Central Kansas Mental Health for 25 years, and numerous positions, well-qualified, and she's welcome aboard, so.
All right. Any other announcements? All right, we go into study sessions. Item number one.
Salina Community Economic Development Organization Expression of Interest Forms.
Good morning, commissioners. So, the, Celine County is one of four entities that founded the Salina Community Economic Development Organization, and we have two appointments to that board besides the chair of, you know, serving as ex officio, two official voting appointments. There are term limits to that board, and one of the folks who has been our appointee has served their full term, and so we have taken Expression of Interest Forms. We have received two Expression of Interest Forms, one from a Josh Doak with, who works at K-State Salina. He has expressed interest in several different boards, and then also from Robert X-line with X-line Corporation, who has expressed interest specifically in SKEDO. I know our other appointee to the SKEDO board has come and, and expressed support for Mr. X-line to be appointed to that board, so welcome any commissioner discussion, and then we would plan on bringing back a resolution next week for appointment of, of one of those two individuals.
All right, we have these two Expression of Interest Forms. I take note to the fact that Mr. Doak has numerous different committees that he has interest in, and on Mr. X-line, just as Salina Community Eco Development Organization. To me personally, I'd like to leave the door open to have Josh Doak in, in the waiting that, that can help us with some of these other department, or committees that he has interest in, and I believe personally that Mr. X-line being a, running a corporation here in Celine County, and a number of employees, the interest that he would have serving on this, I, I think he's well-served, but I would like to hear from the other commissioners, their thoughts.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, Josh Doak, I do not personally know, other than this Expression of Interest Form that he has filled out. It looks like he's well-qualified to do this and/or some other things, as you've alluded to. Mr. X-line, I do know personally, have known for quite some time, the X-line family, and Robert X-line Jr. own the X-line Corporation here in Salina and have for over 100 years. I think he's well-qualified to understand the, what, what the Salina Economic Development Organization wants, and, and what's going to make Salina grow. He's an employer himself of, of probably 130 people or more out there. I think he would be the, the one to, for this particular board, that would be our best choice.
Mr. X-line would be a valuable asset.
Agreed.
Concur.
Yes.
Okay, so we will bring back a resolution of appointment next Tuesday.
Okay, and could I, I just want to mention something in regards to this Josh Doak, is that being so involved with the 4H leaderships and all this, and his past and, and his commitment to the 4H, I would, I would, and the Tri-Vers Fair Board has had a few members that have went off their fair board, and they are looking, and they would really like to get, start with new, new people, trying to decide how to move forward with some of the situations. I would think that that would be a great asset to the Tri-Vers Fair Board at this time.
Good point.
But we don't appoint people to that board, if I'm not mistaken, but I would certainly agree with Roger to perhaps pass his name along to the board.
Yep.
And.
Yeah.
If they're.
Yep.
Okay.
That's all I had to say.
That's good information, Roger. Thanks for picking up on that.
You bet. By the way, do, do we have any positions open right now in the Planning Commission? Do you know, or?
Not at this time. However, we do have changes or potential changes to the board that might be coming up in March, but March is about the timeframe that we look at appointments to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else from the administrator? Well, I think that's going to conclude today's meeting, so I would take the time to adjourn this. My first, my first meeting is.
The chair.
We stumbled through it. Thank you for your help, everybody.
He did a fine job there.
Yeah.